Welcome and thanks for watching tonight's debate. I hope it winds up being a debate. We are live at the Cocoa campus of our host, Eastern Florida State College. I'm Matt Reed, opinions and public affairs editor at Florida Today. And in a minute, I expect to introduce you to the candidates for county commission District One, which includes Titusville, Port St. John, Cape Canaveral, and part of Cocoa. First, I want to thank our co-sponsors for making tonight possible, the Space Coast League of Cities and the League of Women Voters of the Space Coast. Their membership and our editorial advisory board helped us narrow the focus of the questions tonight to issues that matter most in this race. If you're just tuning in, I need to offer you some insight. One of our candidates thus far has not shown for this debate, Rita Pritchett of Titusville. We're not quite sure where she is, but when she shows up, we'll get her onstage and we will get into a debate in earnest. But for now, because he is here on time, I will introduce you to Democrat Ron Taylor, a retired engineer and businessman from Cocoa. Mr. Taylor, why don't you go ahead and give us a two-minute opening statement on who you are and why you're running for county commissioner?
Well, good evening. Also, you'd need to mention that District One includes MEMS also, and MEMS in other areas north. My name is Ron Taylor, running for county commissioner, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I have a long history in this district. My father came down here after the Second World War with my uncle, who was on MacArthur's staff. And that, we ended up going on down to Miami. But I remember fondly in the 50s and the 60s coming up here and seeing the way that this beautiful area looked. Now, we came back, and I've been all over the world as an engineer and so forth. I have a bachelor's degree in ocean engineering from Florida Atlantic University, a master's in mechanical environmental engineering from University of Texas, and MBA from Pepper Tyne University out in California. I've been all over the world, but this was the place that always wanted to come back to. My father built Abbey Marina, which is now Harbor Town, so I have deep roots here. But we're also seeing a lot of changes. Traffic, growth, there's a lot of people, not only me who wanted to come back here, but there's a lot of other people. And how we manage this growth is probably the single most important issue that we have today. And we are at the tipping point where this growth is going to cause us to lose this great place that we have if we're not careful. Thank you.
Let's talk about one of the top issues for Brevard County, and that is the Indian River Lagoon. We know that it's got too much fresh water, too much algae, fish are dying, dolphins and turtles have lesions on them. By all accounts, it will take an expensive cleanup project to restore this estuary to health. What county policy changes or funding methods do you favor to restore the Indian River Lagoon?
Well, as an environmental engineer, I understand the problem that's going on in the Indian River Lagoon. It's fundamentally, it's overdevelopment in a region of the lagoon with a long retention time and the modifications made to the lagoon drainage basin to support that development. Essentially, what enters the lagoon stays there. As an environmental engineer with a jury to ASCE paper, American Society of Civil Engineers, on the problem, I can tell you the solution my opponent proposes simply will not save the Indian River Lagoon. The cat, or sludge for this matter, is out of my opponent's bag. The sludge is already choking our lagoon to death and must be removed. As county commissioner, I'm dedicated to telling you what you need to hear, not what you want to hear to get your vote. I learned the value of this ethic during my career as an engineer and successful small businessman. We're talking half a penny to save our lagoon. Basically, the plan to save it, it's good science, using accepted analysis techniques, and provides good economic justification for spending that half penny. It gives us local control and the ability to get matching funds as opposed to the current system of waiting for the monies to be allocated. I urge everyone to Google the Indian River Lagoon Comprehensive Conservation and Management Plan, which was completed in 1996, 20 years ago. Much of what's in the current Save Our Lagoon plan is derived from this study. It illustrates the colossal failure to clean up our lagoon due to the complexity of federal, state, and local government oversight. Fundamentally, we will have the ability ourselves to clean it up and cut all of that out. Further, I insist only local contractors will have the expertise to do the job be used in cleaning up the lagoon. In doing that, we have the benefit of a $300 million economic stimulus package in addition to the environmental economic benefit.
Well, let me ask you a follow-up question on that. So I take it you support the tax, I think that's what you mentioned?
That's correct.
Tax for the lagoon. How do we know that the spending on, how do we know we're going to get results with that? I mean, we've seen a plan. You say you're an environmental engineer, how do we know it's going to work?
Yeah, there's an oversight committee. It's one of the other reasons why I support the plan. There is an oversight committee made up of representatives who have the needed expertise to manage the plan and provides periodic reviews of the plan. This addresses the issue of cronyism. I, as a commissioner, can't put my best buddy onto the, onto this, you know, onto this committee, oversight committee unless my best buddy has the expertise. Now, I still, it doesn't completely eliminate the problem of cronyism, but it sure goes a long way to help that. And if I see that cronyism happening on that committee, I will speak up.
What's cronyism?
Cronyism is where you place people in position to make, you know, to make decisions where the economics are concerned and so forth, where those decisions can be made that benefit you personally.
Well, if you're concerned about that, where have you seen it elsewhere in county government?
What's that?
Where have you seen cronyism elsewhere in county government?
I'm going to get to that when we get to the, when we get to the next issue. I believe you're going to talk about the economy. I'm going to address that issue.
Okay.
I have one more thing that I would like to say, that the plan leaves it up to you. This is one of the big reasons why I endorse it. The plan leaves it up to you, the voters, not to me. I have one vote, and you have that one vote. We are on equal footing. My vote is no more powerful than your vote.
What if the, I asked this question of the county commission candidates at our last forum, what if the tax doesn't pass? Presumably, the priorities that are in this action plan are still scientifically valid. What would you drop or lower on the priority list to make sure that we're getting the maximum impact for whatever dollars we can make available?
Very good question. If it doesn't pass, I'm going to accept the, what the people want, and hopefully they understand that, remember, this is something that, this is one of the best examples of kicking the can down the road I've ever seen. Remember, I'm talking 20 years ago, they knew this problem. Imagine if we would have really addressed this problem 20 years ago and put in place all the things that they were expecting. We wouldn't be where we are today. But if the voters decide to kick the can further down the road, that's, I believe in the rights of the people, and I will abide by the rights of the people, and I will do my best to try to, to try to work with the state governments, the federal government and so forth. I've been to a lot of their meetings to get the funnies, the funds broken loose to be able to do the things that we need to do, such as, and the primary thing is sludge. By the way, there are, on the good side, the, remember, I mentioned in the beginning that there was, a lot of the problems that were caused was changing the natural flow of the environment. See, all the, all the flow of the environment used to go, the water used to go to the St. John's River. We just, and people have been fighting for a number of years, and the money just got appropriated for that, to re-divert that flow back into the St. John's River as opposed to going into the Indian River. Because when they dug the channel there, they dug it too deep, and a lot of the nutrients and so forth were leaching into that channel. And it eliminated, I think, something like 20, 26% of the load on the Indian River Lagoon, just that one action. So I think we can try to find, work with the state and federal government as well as we can, and try to find the best answers to solve these problems as you go along. You know, you have to, you have to work with what you got.
Okay. We're going to move on to roads. I'll just point out that if Rita Pritchett, your opponent, does arrive sometime in the next period of the hour, we will, we'll come back and perhaps revisit the lagoon issue again. Let's talk about roads, though. Brevard has challenges maintaining the roads that it has. Certainly, there's roads that are bumpy and rough and others roads that aren't paved at all. The county commission has spent the better part of the past year now going through its budget process, trying to find sources of dollars to significantly catch up on road paving. It hasn't necessarily succeeded at that. So what would you do?
Well, one thing I wouldn't do is declare an emergency to override what the voters said that there were the 3% cap. I know there's a lot of controversy about that, but this, this is what, this was a referendum that the voters decided to have. We can't just stamp on that. Maybe what you want to do is go back to the voters and have a referendum, say, listen, we got this emergency, we're not able to make the, bacon, so forth. Will you increase that cap and see what happens? Roads, I review, I view roads as a primary function of the county. The problem is, in reality, the commission has very little discretionary funds remaining after funds for mandatory budget items are allocated. I'm a believer in, don't expect what you, don't expect what you don't inspect. As a corporate executive vice president, I managed a $2 billion budget. Every budget has, and I found, every budget has excesses in it, and I've found zero-based budgeting is the best way to ferret out those excesses. I understand zero-based budgeting in government has its limitations due to the time involved in preparing the budget, but this can be addressed by applying the method every three to five years. I can attest that the method, methodology is far superior to the traditional incremental budgeting process where you just take it and you just add incrementally, well, we've got disinflation and so forth. You've got to go back in and ferret out the, the excesses. Now, this is a little controversial. The county currently funds charities. I do not see this as a core function of the county government. I believe that it is unethical for the county to take taxpayer monies and allocate them to charities, no matter how noble the intention. I prefer discretionary system where the taxpayer has the option to donate to charities and so designate it on their tax return and pay a charity tax if that's selected. To me, that is a fair way, equitable way to be able to handle this situation, and it also can free up monies that should, you know, go to roads. Another way to get more road mile, is to get more road mileage paved, is to employ other less expensive technologies than the current, those currently employed by the county. The county paving methodology is the best out there, I grant it with that, with the longest life cycle. But there are less expensive but proven methods that may be appropriate for residential neighborhood roads that are, and the cost is a tenth of that per mile of the, of the current paving methodologies. By the way, Palm Bay is currently evaluating certain of these methodologies. Lastly, and this is another controversial area, we need to reevaluate sunsetting CRAs.
Let's come back to that issue, because that's, that's a whole other topic that I want to get to tonight. It's a very important one.
But that is a way, by doing that, to free up monies to be able to go into roads.
Okay, we'll come back to that. One thing I wanted to follow up on that last question was, because you're the third county commission candidate, I've heard say that you would not exercise this power that the county commission has to declare a fiscal emergency and lift the revenue cap. The condition that we're in today is the result of property values plummeting during the recession, which was an emergency, and being locked into place by this voter-approved cap. But voters also approved the mechanism of allowing the county commissioners to declare an emergency. I guess my question for you is, what is an emergency?
That's a very good question. One person's emergency is another person's opportunity, I guess, I don't know how to put that.
If we can't take care of our roads...
If we, well, the assumption that you're making is that we can't find the money to be able to free up, to do, to do the paving of the roads, or the, and again, I mentioned other methodologies that might be adequate, that if, if there's no other alternatives, if they can be shown that they've really gone through the budget, and, and if it can be shown that they've looked at these other methodologies and so forth, and bring that to me, then I think that, you know, I would consider doing the emergency. But I'm not sure that we're at the emergency state yet.
Okay, fair enough. Let's move on to the issue of economic competitiveness. You're in District One, that's Titusville, Port St. John, as you reminded me, MEMS in North Brevard. How should county government encourage business and job growth for everyone in your district or District One?
Well, that's, that's a very good question, and we're going to get back to the issue of cronyism here. Let me say from the start, I'm a proponent for small businesses. I believe this is the true creator of wealth for the American family and the dream of every American. I believe it's to be, to be owner of your own business. I live the American dream, and it's been my goal, it's my goal to allow every citizen in North Brevard to have the ability to live their dream of financial independence. I support Nbeds, okay? If it were governed and focused more on small businesses. Recently, with the Blue Origin Project, the Nbeds staff, you know, commissioners, allocated a allocation to Blue Origin, which really results in a cash deal of $10 million, if you go in and analyze it. Not tax deferments, and this cash goes to the second richest individual in America, on property owned by the federal government with no property tax benefit, and in an area that some people say is beyond, you know, the region of District One. This money was given even though the entire purpose of Nbeds was to make North Brevard less dependent on the space industry by diversifying its economy. That's the whole reason, okay? Oh, gosh, we, the space program collapsed and North Brevard was, was decimated, so that's one of the justifications for Nbeds, but what are they doing? They are giving $10 million in cash to a project, a risky project, okay, to, to, in the space, our space program. Imagine, okay, if $100,000 was given to 100 small businesses, like what, as was done with the Brexit project, North Brevard would light up with long-term diversified businesses with great potential for growth, instead of what we see now, US One littered with bordered up businesses. And it goes even further. Robin Fisher gave millions in tax breaks to Walmart Depot in West Cocoa, and my wife and I were just over at the, at a meeting on the impact in West Cocoa of this project, a facility solely owned by the Walton family that has more wealth than the combined income of 40% of the population of the United States, and in the process has a severe impact on neighborhood property values and safety due to the truck traffic. This, in my opinion, is immoral. The second problem I have with Nbeds, if it can be corrected, I would love it, the Nbeds. I see a bigger concern with respect to cronyism. I urge each of you to go out to iOnBrevard, that's E-Y-E-on-Brevard.com, and read the current article out there.
Let me ask you a follow-up question here, because I want to go back to this Blue Origin deal, because my understanding was that the North Brevard Economic Zone was to help that area recover from the loss of these, you know, job layoffs in the space shuttle program. And helping people who were in the space industry get jobs in space industry seems like a pretty good fit. My understanding was that $10 million helped this company take a piece of land that was, you know...
It's federal land.
Right. But to prepare it to be developable compared to a piece of property of equal value in Volusia County, so you'd be happy to not have that? You'd rather not have that?
Well, here's my, here's my opinion of it, okay? I think it would have gone ahead anyway, okay? Let me, okay, I served as a senior vice president on one of the largest financial services company in the world. I've been in the boardroom. I know how they make their decisions, okay? And this, worrying about $10 million on a project like that, and then this goes for other projects, so forth. What they do is they, they figure it out, you know, and they even go in and figure out, remember, these are profit-oriented companies, and they're not in here for the benefit of the community, they're in here for their bottom line. Don't forget that. And they will actually make decisions to go in and say, oh gee, you know, we know these people, because right now, we, we have this, this belief in this trickle-down economics, right? That if you take care of the rich and you help them out, somehow it trickles down to America. How's that working out for you folks? The American middle class has been in decline for the last 20 years since that. It's not a trickle-down economics, it's turned out to be a drought for most of the people and a boon for the wealthiest people, you know, in the country. Their wealth is going up leaps and bounds, and you're throwing more money at them when you could take that same money and give it to your fellow citizens and get more benefit. That's my point.
Okay.
I don't believe, I don't believe in this trickle-down economics, sorry.
Fair enough. If you had $10 million to spend in another way, or $10 million to sacrifice in some other way, that would help smaller businesses and entrepreneurs in Brevard County get started and hire, or whatever, how would you do it?
Okay, first off, yeah, the program that I would put in place is, and I would use that, by the way, to fund that $10 million, they may have to do some bonding, okay? They may bankrupt Nbeds, you know, possibly, unless they can't get bonds for that commitment that they have. The way I would do it is, actually, is I would offer all small, and I believe in not picking, you know, the government should not be in the role of picking winners and losers. If you're going to have a program, you offer it to all people, all people who want in their enterprise. The way I would do it to start out would be to have a system where, based on tax breaks, where small, the biggest problem that small businesses have is cash flow in the beginning, okay? That's the biggest source of failure. If they get delayed in the permitting process or anything like that, and, and it happens, believe me, it took me three years to get my permits, okay? My, and the, the projects that I've built, if there's any delay like that, that's devastating. So my proposal is to have a step up where, instead of the property tax they've got, to give them, you know, just the first year, you only pay 20% of your property tax, second year, 40%, third year, 60%, fourth year, 80%, and in your fifth year, you're fully up. Why, you can give these tax breaks to these big corporations, why can't you do it to your fellow citizens? And I would use, and there would be, and when you have those programs going, you're going to be able to spot, and, you know, businesses, some, a lot of businesses are going to fail. That's the, that's the name of the game, okay? But you're going to spot some real opportunities where there are going to be businesses, and I, you know, the Brexit, and that's where I think the Nbeds did a fabulous job with the Brexit project. They gave them, they gave them $100,000, you know, to be able to build what they have, and that's a huge success. So you're going to spot businesses like that, and where they want to take that next step up, where they're going to employ more people and they can justify it, give them $50,000, give them $100,000. Now, I want to speak, I'm going to address another issue, okay? On, with respect to Nbeds and the problem with Nbeds. And that's what I saw, that's what I call the issue of cronyism. And again, go back to that iOnBrevard.com article, and I'm going to take a quote from that article right here. It says, "Take a look at the North Brevard Economic Development Zone in which Robin Fisher is the sitting commissioner on the board. Other members of the board are his business partners in Coalfish Incorporated, his accountant, his neighbor appointed to board, okay, was appointed to the board, his attorney, another former business partner, and the Titusville Planning Director, whose wife is former business partner of Robin Fisher's wife. Rather than oversight being supplied by the commissioner, this is more like a neighborhood baseball team with Robin Fisher as the coach. In all, six of the nine commissioners on Nbeds are from Titusville and two from the MEMS area who are personal friends of Robin Fisher. Only one commissioner is from south of Titusville, where 46% of the population resides. That's taxation without representation. If elected commissioner, I will correct these problems with Nbeds and pull the linchpin holding this cabal, I call it the cabal, together. Nbeds will then serve the function to which it was intended, the economic prosperity of all North Brevard citizens." Thank you for giving me the opportunity to say that.
Okay. We're, we've got an issue that, it's related to this. Obviously, the North Brevard Economic Zone is a community redevelopment agency. Community redevelopment agencies are tools usually for cities to plan and fund redevelopment of struggling or blighted areas. For our viewers, they don't, they don't raise or impose new taxes, they sequester revenue increases that come from the growth in property values, and they do things like fund beautification of downtown Melbourne, they create beachfront parks in Satellite Beach and...
Oh, yeah, and what Myra did on Merritt Island, it was absolutely gorgeous what they did.
So what, what changes, if any, would you make to community redevelopment agencies in general, if any?
Well, first off, you've got to sunset them, okay? I believe in, everything has its lifecycle, okay? And you need, and, I don't know, maybe it's just the human nature or whatever, but, but where money is concerned, you can have, corruption can occur. An example of this was what happened with Satellite Beach a few years ago, a number of years ago, in which they used some of these CRA funds for other purposes, besides what they're intended. I would have pulled, you know, canceled their contract, they had abused their contract, and I would have canceled it right there. So if they're done right, for what their intended purpose is, fine, but again, you've got to, this issue is cronyism. It's so easy, and what, like what's happened with a lot of CRAs, where it becomes a bundle of piece of money that they count on, and then they end up becoming, you know, and if you go back and read what the original intents of CRAs were, and again, I urge you to read this article, because it goes into that, it says what the original intent was, it has gone, you know, way, way, way out here. So that, and that's why it's important to sunset things, so if they get, you have a means to be able to shut them down. Now, once you get them there, I mean, I'm not a politician, okay? I told you, I'm going to tell you what you need to hear, not what you, what you want to hear. And there's going to be people squirming in their seats when I say, oh, you'd like to shut down... to shut down CRAs. No, I'd like to, after they serve their purpose, I believe, I'm a fiscally responsible person who believes that you set goals, you just don't throw money at and just put cash out there, okay? You set goals, and then you measure the success of those goals, and then you have an end to all, to that cycle. And you don't, and that's the fundamental problem that we have with the CRAs. And not only that, it drains money from the county. We could use this money for repairing roads.
Why do you suppose people pass those in the first place? Seems like the reason they do it is...
There was a time, I mean, and go back, and did you, I don't know if you've read the original documents on, you know, why CRAs were informed in the first place. Basically, they were meant to help the poor, blighted areas, and it's in the document, that's what they, that's what the intent was. Which is a noble intent, and I agree with that, that, and there are many, that's why, there are many areas up in North Brevard that are blighted, that we do need help, okay? But the monies, and again, that's why North Brevard Economic Development Zone is there, but the money's not making it to them, it's making it to the second richest guy in the United States.
Let's go to the issue of budgets and taxes here. How do you define, you just described yourself as fiscally responsible. How do you define fiscally responsible?
I look at being fiscally responsible as a process on the way that you go about addressing a project. Where what you do is you figure out what is the need, what do we have to accomplish here? And then, and that's one of the reasons why I support the Lagoon Plan, they actually, people actually put a lot of thought into it, a lot of, a lot of good thought, thought. So you get a goal, and then you find out how much it costs, you do an economic analysis on it to see, make sure that it's just not a sink, because many operations that you can do, you actually make money off of, you get a return on, like, and I think they've shown that with the Lagoon Plan and so forth, and there are others that we can talk about. And then you put, you know, allocate the monies, and then you put measurable points where you monitor it. You just don't throw money at a problem. You take a problem, put, you know, this is our goal, and then you say, hey, have we made it here? And then you make adjustments if you hadn't, and so forth, and if not, then you shut it down. That's called being fiscally responsible, not, not throwing money out to get votes, which happens a lot, and not only, you know, it's a pandemic problem in America.
What kind of projects or initiatives do you foresee leading in District One for the people there?
You know, very good question, because, again, we get, what we, what's given out to our people are these economic programs, because, you know, it's like, you know, kumbaya, this is the good story and so forth. I'm a realist. There are two major problems in North Brevard. One is gangs and violence, okay? It's there, it's real. And two, homelessness. Now, I'm a fiscally responsible person, but I also believe in being socially progressive. We have to help our people, and we have to put in place plans that will allow them to be able to get where they're at and improve their life, and if you can do that, they no longer are a liability. That's why I'm a big proponent of the triage programs for the homeless, and I, you know, there's a recent article where Melbourne has implemented such a plan, or is in the process of implementing it, and it's been used in cities throughout the United States, and here in Florida, you know, it's being adopted by several cities here in Florida. What the idea behind a triage program is, instead, what they found out, and this is studies have done, is that the homeless, they, they do crimes, petty crimes, and there's a cost of that. And why are they doing it? Because they want to, they want to get fed, they want to, they, you know, and so forth. They even will commit crimes to get arrested, to go to jails, to have a place to stay, okay? And this is a problem that we're just trying to ignore. So with a triage program, what you do is you bring in those people, before you arrest them, you know, pick them up and bring them into the triage area, and if they're nonviolent, okay, must be nonviolent, they, you then put them through a program to, you know, get, most of the problem is drugs, and a lot, with veterans, it's, you know, the, you know, having trauma from being in war, post-traumatic stress disorder. So we bring them in, and we give them the psychological and the medical attention to determine what their problem is, and then we provide them and put them into a path to get help. This has been proven, this, they've, cities that have done this, their crime rate has gone down by seventy-two percent. And so, and by the savings that you have from that reduction in crime, I'm talking about the crime rate by this population, goes down seventy-two percent, that by those savings, okay, that you have, you know, it pays for itself, the program. There are a number of, again, go out and Google triage programs, and you'll see these programs, and they actually have statistics and graphs and so forth that show that it is a program that pays for itself.
Well, since we're having a one-on-one, I want to ask you a follow-up question to that. You just got done describing a new program that you would do that would try to help save money potentially on jail costs by creating sort of a, a new social service effort. The charities that you said that you didn't like earlier, that you don't think the county should fund, one of them is a program for youth who are at high risk of becoming offenders, and it helps keep them out of jail in the first place so that they don't cost, and another one is Meals on Wheels for seniors, which keeping them fed and allowing them to be in their homes might save costs elsewhere for the county down the road. How do you square wanting to do away with those things with what you just described a minute ago?
Well, very easily. There are people out there who are, one, and a lot of people who are out there from being homeless, one monthly payment away, okay? Who are just barely able to make that, and you're saying that they should take money from them to, you know, you know, by giving money to the charities, that you should force that person to give to the charity? I'm not saying that people shouldn't give it to the charity, I'm saying that people should have the option on whether they want to or not. It should not be the role of government to pick winners and losers of this charity or that charity and so forth. It's up to the, I believe in the people, I believe in the person, I believe in empowering, you know, the people. You're taking something away from them when you do that.
Fair enough. What other changes to...
I believe Ms. Pritchett has arrived, give her a chance, I don't know how much time she's left.
Well, she can come right on up and sit down and join us for the...
Did you get the message, sir? There was a paper work at Rocket City, they opened campus.
Oh, okay, well, go ahead and join us. Okay. Well, thank you for joining us, Rita Pritchett, I'm glad that we're going to be able to ask you some questions on some of these issues as well, sorry about the confusion. Let's go ahead and just dive right into a question that I said we would ask you about, and that is your take on the Indian River Lagoon. What, what solutions or changes or programs do you support to help clean up this estuary?
I know we're working towards a sales tax, and if that's approved, it's going to be a whole nother conversation, I'm waiting to see how that comes back. I would have preferred that would have been a four-year project, so that we could looked at, look at it, see if it would have worked, but there's so many, it's going to be so expensive to fix this lagoon, you know, really, it's a state problem, and we're going to have to assess how we're going to clean this up, we've got to quit putting bad things into our river, and we've got to work hard to get the stuff out that we've already put in. So on that note, there's going to be appropriate funding if that passes, probably to fulfill the plan to clean up the river, but if that doesn't go through, we're going to have to really pick a lot of low-hanging fruit, we're going to have to work on our stormwater issue, we're going to have to work on baffle boxes, we're going to have to fix some of the underlying sewage problems that we have that's leaking through septic tanks and old pipes. So there's a lot of work we're going to have to do on the river, but it's going to have to be a community effort, a county effort, and a state effort.
You're a CPA and accountant, I trust you've taken a look at county budgets. If the tax doesn't pass, and these priorities are still scientifically valid things to pursue, where in county budgets would you look to cut or achieve savings in order to pay for those things?
You know, we're going to have to look over the budget, because I think we're going to have to reprioritize the budget. I think that safety and infrastructure has to come first, and we're going to have to put some budget funds into our lagoon, so we're going to have to take a really good look at the budget and see what changes need to be made. But there's some things that we can do that's relatively inexpensive to quit putting some bad things into our lagoon, and we're really going to have to work harder of accomplishing those, we're going to have to really push for the Amendment One funds, but this is going to be more than a county effort, it's going to have to be a state and a community effort as well, we're going to have to really work together as a state, because, you know what, if Brevard County puts all this money into fixing it and the other counties don't help, it's not going to be as prosperous as we need it to be with just our tax funds, and it's, you know, we're taking tax funds out of all of our citizens here, and we have to be very responsible with how we're spending these, and I don't want to just throw them away on things that we aren't going to be able to fix.
Can I, can I say something here?
Let me just catch up real quick, I want to get Rita Pritchett's answers on the record, so that voters can compare. We'll come back, and we'll get back into the groove here, we go back and forth according to the format here in just a minute. I want to ask you about the North Brevard Economic Zone.
Okay.
We spent a little bit of time talking about that. Your opponent says that he is opposed to that, he thinks that it's loaded with cronyism and that it shouldn't exist, that it doesn't serve its mission today.
That's not what I said, I said if these things were corrected, it would be, their areas would be corrected.
Okay, fair enough. Rita Pritchett, what is your position on the North Brevard Economic Zone and how it's doing its job?
Well, my background, even getting involved with government, why I did, was because of where we came from, from six and seven years ago, we had tremendous poverty in the north zone, and the whole county suffered from economic problems, but we got a double whammy because we were so heavily invested upon the space program. Our fault, we probably should have had more diversity, but you could, every street, there was probably one house empty out of three, we had great, we had a lot of problems, everybody's moving out, all the young families were moving out, they had to, they had to get jobs, I work at a church, we were having problems making the church budget, I mean, it was really getting tough. And then we came up with this, this plan to help fix it, because it was a blighted area with the North Brevard Zone, and we did an intercoastal agreement with the city of Titusville, and we started putting this into play, and you know what, it's working. I can't speak for every CRA, and I don't believe every CRA is probably appropriate, I think there needs to be great oversight on them, and I think there needs to be time limits, but what we're doing with this zone is starting to work, we have companies starting to move in, we have families moving back in, the houses are starting to fill up, and if we didn't have this opportunity with this type of funding to entice businesses, I think we would still be a great burden on the county, and I think it would, it would be a tremendous problem still of even trying to get people into our area. So yes, I do believe in our zone, I think there's some CRAs we got to look at and maybe retire, but it's really working in the north area.
This is going to sound completely out of order, but I didn't introduce you extensively before, you are a...
I'm a certified public accountant, yes, sir.
Certified public accountant and a two-term Titusville City Councilwoman.
I am.
I gave Ron an opportunity to make an opening statement, why don't I give you that opportunity now to give a one-minute opening statement before we move on to a format of questions?
Now that I'm starting to breathe a little here.
Yes, please tell us what you stand for.
I'm Rita Pritchett, I've lived in Brevard County my whole life, we've raised our six children and our eight grandchildren here. I have a bachelor's in business, I have a master's in accountancy, I've worked at New Life Christian Fellowship Church for twenty-seven years, I teach tax and accounting at Eastern Florida State College, that's kind of my hobby job, and I'm on my second term of the Titusville City Council, and life is good.
Okay, all right, I'm going to ask a question that's more personal, I'm going to give you each one minute according to the format, and then give us, we'll go back around and give you an opportunity to read, but how would you describe your leadership style? So much of what the county commission does is negotiation and compromise, how would you approach getting other county commissioners to support your priorities? Let's start with Ron Taylor.
Very good question. I've found in my career that, one, being a good listener and trying to find a common ground with, you have to build teams. We're stronger as a team than as an individual. I've learned in my career the skill set on how to identify what the problems are, how to be a good listener, and how to try to bring people together, and try to understand where they're coming from, and what's their interest, and then try to find that common ground. You can't, you can't just go in, especially with five commissioners, you can't just go in and say, hey, commissioner, you're going to do what I want you to do, you have to be able to build consensus. I know how to build consensus, I've successfully done that, I've been in the, like I say, not only building my own businesses, but, and being senior vice president, if you don't have that skill, you're not in the boardroom.
Rita Pritchett.
One of my favorite college courses was a cornerstone class where they had us spend a lot of time in Stephen Covey's book, Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, and it's a great management book, there's habit one and habit two, that I think's been one of the most valuable things in my life, to learn people skills and communication and how to develop relationships so you can get some things done. And habit one is seek he first to understand, and habit two is seek he then to be understood. So I think there has to be some common relationships exercises that start working on the county level, we've done it on the city level, there's sunshine law, so you can't go out and spend time together, but you have to develop a certain type of trust, and, you know, everything we do's got to be for the good of the county, and I know we've got to take care of our districts, but if we're all working towards the same good, then we should be able to fulfill that purpose with relationships of understanding each other.
Okay, let's give you each thirty seconds to clarify or respond if you want it, otherwise we'll move on to the next subject, Ron Taylor.
No, we can move on to the next subject.
Okay. There's a project that your predecessor, potentially Robin Fisher, has pitched for downtown Titusville, and that is a combination minor league baseball stadium plus event center, and it would be right on the river down there, the pictures look very, very nice. You pay for a combination of tourist taxes, economic zone taxes, and private team investment. And I'd like to get each of your takes on that project, whether you support it or not, what you might do differently. Rita Pritchett.
I've been able to sit in through some meetings because I've been participating with the conversation, I'm pretty sure it's ninety-nine point nine percent that it's not going to be a men's minor or major league project. We're trying to encourage some type of project, though, in that area that will stimulate economic growth with tourism. I'm for anything that brings tourism into the area, and anything that promotes, you know, family activity for our kids and our youth, that we can be a family area. So on that aspect, you know, I don't think that project anymore is on the books, they're looking at some other things to maybe do with, with that part of the downtown that's going to complement the splash park. The community raised a quarter of a million dollars to put a splash park in, in that area. So I think that the move now is towards, you know, outside youth and children's activity in that area, and tournaments for little league and fast pitch girls softball, which is a huge tourism draw. So I don't know if that helps change your question a little, but that's what I know right now is going on.
Ron Taylor.
Am I to take, Ms. Pritchett, that it's no for the stadium, you're saying?
Yes, sir, I believe that it's no longer a conversation for a men's major or minor league stadium there.
Okay, so all the citizens out there up in North Brevard don't have to worry about a stadium being put in?
I'm not sure what the project's going to be, we're looking, I think, more towards a girls' fast pitch, you know, before this even came up, there was two baseball fields, I grew up playing baseball on that field, and we're trying to, I think the focus is to maybe get some soccer fields out there and some ball fields back, so that we can build this up into a big family area downtown along the water.
Okay, I'll very simply, no on the stadium.
I think you can't just say a no on a project with knowing all the details, and know if it's going to meet the needs of the community. I'm for anything that would hurt taxpayers, hurt our lagoon, or mess with the I'm for anything that would hurt taxpayers, hurt our lagoon, or, or mess with the things we're trying to achieve, but if the, the, the plan and the purpose is within those realms, I think it's something we have to consider for our community.
Okay. Well, at this point, I want to transition a little bit. I'm going to give you each a minute to give a closing statement. We'll start with Ron Taylor.
Yeah, Ms. Pritchett, you can start.
Oh, all right. Rita Pritchett.
This is probably one of the fastest interviews I've ever had to do. I, we're, we're at such a critical place still. We've, we've worked so hard as a community, and we've come through, through so much. And we have the foundation laid now. I've been on the city council now for six years, and it hasn't been easy. We've had to cut budgets, we've had to pay off some bonds, we've, we've had to make a lot of really hard calls. And we're at a place right now in, in our, in our county, and I, mainly our district is what I'm looking at right now, because that's what I've been working in so, so heavily. We're at a place now where we start having some building coming back. We have companies moving back in, we have young families moving back into the area. Revenues are starting to increase, and it's looking really good for us. And so I, I think we need to continue the course that we've been doing for the last three or four years. It's starting to work. I, I really think we have a great future ahead, and I really see, in District One, you'll understand this, I see a Panera and a Chick-fil-A on the way.
Ron Taylor.
Well, I, I love kumbaya moments, and I, I look forward to all of the good things that are going to be happening to North Brevard. I'm going to be a commit, by North Brevard, I mean Port St. John, Cocoa, Mims, Cannaveral Groves, and, and other cities besides just Titusville. I will not become the super mayor of Titusville like we've had in the past. I will be a commissioner for all the people in North Brevard. And I will see programs that benefit all the citizens of North Brevard, not just a select few. There is the cabal, I call it, in North Brevard. I will pull, if you elect me, I will pull that linchpin and free the economic growth for all of North Brevard. We, it is not, we do have problems in North Brevard. It's not all kumbaya. They're just being swept under the rug. I will address those problems for all the people. Thank you.
All right. Well, that brings us to the end of our first program tonight. My thanks to the candidates for county commission...
Thank you, sir.
...District One for joining us here at Eastern Florida State College in Melbourne, and for a good recovery for this show. They are Republican Rita Pritchett of Titusville and Democrat Ron Taylor of Cocoa. Again, I'd like to thank our sponsors, the Space Coast League of Cities and the League of Women Voters, and of course, Eastern Florida State College. You'll watch replay of tonight's forum at floridtoday.com, and don't miss our live election night coverage of results in all Space Coast races right here on WEFS. I'm Matt Reed from Florida Today. Coming up eight, we'll question the candidates for Brevard County School Board. Thank you.